New growth, okay, the certified tax rate brings in you the same tax dollars as what was charged the prior year. I do not have the debt rate in here because of the budget that you guys did the other day. Uh, so bringing down certified tax rate would bring us eight million nine hundred eighty-two thousand. New growth of forty-one thousand dollars. So we could, we could collect nine million twenty-three thousand dollars. Without any type of uh, tax increase at all. With the adjustments that you made to the budget the other day. That lowers, the general fund is the first one here, six million seven, down to four million nine hundred and seven thousand dollars. The others are collecting the, the budgeted amount that is in the budget. So bringing revenue down to seven point, seven million one hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. One comment I wanted to make, and I sent this into an email to all of you. In your budget transfers you did the other day. Mister Caldwell has total combined sales tax at seven million nine hundred sixty thousand dollars. Our highest year ever was last year at six million seven hundred thousand dollars. I think he has grossly overestimated the sales tax. So what's gonna happen is you will not collect enough revenue. So I would not recommend you lower this tax rate down to that. Because you would definitely not have enough revenue come doing the next year's budget. That's my comments on that one. So with that commissioners, I have before you, there's three pieces of paper. The first two is the certified rate, leaving it as the original budget was adopted in December. Bringing in eleven million three hundred eighty-nine thousand with the GO debt. If that's, so that's would bring in what was originally adopted then. Your second page brings the revenue down to seven million one hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. With the adjustment as you did in your budget increase the, few weeks ago. I would highly recommend you bring that general fund rate back up to at least six point five. That way you're saying you're gonna get some value from sales tax increase. But I do not see sales tax being that high history wise. I went clear back to two thousand and, back to two thousand, we have never received that type of sales tax. So, that's my comments on that. So with that commissioners, you have those two options and anywhere in between. That we have, we can do. We just can't go over the certified.
So the, this rate, it's based upon either, either, either the two that we have.
The two that you have, and when are you?
Those are based upon the, the budget.
That is your budgeted dollar. So the first one you have bringing eleven million three eighty-nine. That is what the budget that was adopted in December of twenty twenty-one. That's what we started this year's budget with. The section, second option is what has been revised in your meeting the other day. Bringing it down to a total of seven million one hundred eighty-nine thousand. But, the four point nine million in general fund is Commissioners in the past have always tried to let the next commission, whoever coming in. Have a stable economy in what we're doing. This one here is very detrimental, in my opinion, to the county. Future commissioners to try to continue to operate without having to go through an immediate tax increase. But you guys are the commissioners, you make that choice. I'm just presenting the certified rate and what you have revised your budget to. And then the third sheet there is the assessing and collecting, which is a separate rate on that one.
I got a question, I'm trying to think how to ask it. So I, I would like a, an honest answer on, on how, what your opinion is. What, what do you feel like? The dollar amount that the county should have on hand is. Where, where is that line that, that for operational money? Let's, let's take the restricted, the ones like
All the restricted
B road funds, uh, the, the money for the, that's the care centers. Let's take that money out of
Take all that out of there.
Just for everyday operations.
Everyday to operations, I didn't bring, you have about a twenty-four million dollar general fund budget, twenty-four to twenty-five million dollars. I think you should have at least fifty percent of that or right close, but you have to have at least. I believe it is twenty-five percent. Now, don't hold me to that one, I'd have to go back and look at the code. At least twenty or twenty-five percent fund balance. In the general fund. Because you have to make payroll, you have to make paycheck or accounts payable checks all year long. And this monies do not come in until December. Taxpayers pay in November, we finally get somewhat of in December, balance of it in January, February. So you're running all year long off of your fund balance to pay your day-to-day bills.
Okay.
So, I would shoot for at least fifty percent or at least thirty to forty percent of what your general fund budget is. So you're not getting twenty-four million, fifty percent, you should have at least twelve million in fund balance.
Okay.
Ten million probably be, would be the
Minimum?
Minimum in my, how I've tried to administer the budget over the years. Because we have, I, UNA County, since I've been here, have not had to do tax anticipation notes. To borrow money to physically pay our payroll and our accounts payable every two weeks and or every week also. By you taking this down this much, I would be very you would be looking at within a year, next year doing tax anticipation notes. Because you're not gonna bring seven point nine million in sales tax money.
You think that's overestimated by a million?
Oh, easily a million, easily a million. But by even, but even if you took the tax rate back to the five point nine million. You're still lowering taxes. But you're if you guys wanna continue, you're, you're planning to be a commissioner next year, you are definitely tying your hands right here.
Yeah, which, if, if I, I mean, just stay away from any campaigning that way.
Right, right.
My, my, my personal opinion, and, and it's been this, and that, this is why I'm wanting your, a number from you. I'm concerned over, over the last few years since I've been in, and I'm, I'm only addressing the years that I've been in office. And I'm, and I'm taking the total amount of money, we can do the general fund, we can do whichever we want to do, but I'm taking the, the whole amount.
General fund is the one that I usually look at.
In, in nineteen, we, we decided we was gonna pay some of that debt off. And so we transferred money over, and so in twenty, we paid off nine, nine point five, nine point seven million dollars, correct?
Right thereabouts, yeah, roughly around.
With even paying that debt off, we increased another two and a half million dollars the next year.
Part of that nine million, you took three million thereabouts, just under three million out of the library. Because that was library debt.
Yeah.
The other debts was the public safety complex, which was down to under nine. We pulled mo- a lot of that out of capital projects and some out of general fund.
Okay. And, and so I guess what I'm trying to get to is, is me personally, and I, and I'm a graph person, I like graphs, but somewhere, I would like to see a line that, that's drawn through. We need to have this much cash on hand. We need this much debt, we need this much. And that line's what we balance to. If we get above that, we, we're taxing too high. If we're below that, we need to, we need to tax a little bit more. I am personally not scared of truth and taxation. I, I would, I would like to get to the bottom. And so we know what we have to have to operate, and then do a truth and taxation, and, and that's me personally. I, I've never been through one, so it's easy
They're just the ball, I've been through several of them.
I'm sure, I, you know, it's easy for me to say that because I've never went through one. I've sat through one, and I've listened to one. Uh, but, but to me, and, and this is just Bart Haslam, I've, I've, I've been looking, I've really been looking and trying to since you sent your email out, trying, cause I, I don't wanna make a mistake, I'll just tell you it's point blank. So I've been looking where the general fund expenditures were, um, went clear back to two thousand up to now. Watching this graph, trying to figure out exactly where does that line need to be? Does it need to be fifteen million? Does it need to be twenty million? Where does that line?
On general fund, I would shoot for fifty percent of that, of your budget.
Okay.
And like I say, with, I don't have it in front of me, it's twenty-three, twenty-four million dollars general fund budget. I would shoot for at least fifty percent, not anything less than ten million dollars. Because you never know if you've gotta replace a roof, you don't know what's gonna come up. So that's just, that's my comments.
Come out of the, the uh, general fund or out of the capital projects?
A roof, I would push out of capital projects.
Okay.
Cause we've always budgeted in the past million dollars to do capital repairs to this building, the public safety complex between the two of them. Some years, we don't spend it. Other years, we opened up and spend more than that. So that's just
I'm just, I'm just asking some questions, so I can wrap my head around. I, I'm, I'm trying to get an idea where we wanna be debt load. You know, we know someday there's gonna be another project we wanna do. Where's the debt load that's safe to carry? Where's the balances? And to me, there's, if there's a line there, we understand.
There is a formula in state code, you can have a certain percentage of GO debt. A percentage of it to total value, and I
We were well under
Oh yeah, we're well under that. I mean, I would never recommend we go anywhere near that.
We were looking at that, we didn't even, we didn't even consider
Yeah, we're not anywhere near that.
Other than, uh, uh, that's what I've been trying to, to figure out, and I had, I pulled the general fund expenditures for the last twenty-one years, and then other expenditures for twenty-one years. And I, to try to follow that and see where, what kind of money has been spent, you know, extra. And other than fourteen and fifteen, and I'm gathering that's when they built the conference center.
Fourteen, fifteen, probably pretty close.
Cause, I mean, that
We did put a lot of, we purchased a lot of property at that time.
Yeah, there, there was a lot of money spent that year.
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, a lot. And so I'm just, so I'm trying to take that out of the average. Because this year, if we, we can pay that geo bond off, it's gonna be fairly high again this year.
Correct.
So you're trying to take those off the, off the average.
That's
Twice, but um, for, for actually for other expenditures, it's almost three times the other next highest and then about four times the average.
That's the general fund?
Yeah. Well, that was other, general fund expenditures really didn't do much.
See, so what year, did that take that clear back to when we built the public safety complex?
This is twenty fifteen, and I know people can't see this, but twenty fifteen. Um, it showed us UNA County expenditures about a hundred and fifty million. And of that hundred and fifty million, roughly, see that's twenty-five. About a hundred and twenty-five thousand of it was in other expenditures, a hundred and twenty-five million. So I don't know where that
And that was, that was a fairly
When did, I don't remember what year we built the public safety complex, be pretty
It was still being, yeah, it was before that.
Finished just before that?
Twenty fifteen's when the, the, they opened over at the, um, conference center. But most, a lot of that debt was transferred over to impact mitigation.
Mm-hmm.
You can follow those expenses along, and, and it's, it's kind of an average of what the general fund is expenditures has been, and then the other expenditures. Uh, uh, there's a nice average that goes across there, and you can draw that line, and then you can tell what years there were something
Yeah, you can tell when something
Something big had went on.
Big had went on.
So, I, I guess to go back to maybe your comment, Commissioner Horricks. You're the only one that's set that will be here. We know he's not gonna be here.
Okay. There's a, you know
You're the one who would have to address
Like to hear from, uh, Mark a little bit about what he thinks of the overdraft or the over exact, or being a million dollars over on our sales tax budget, but the next thing that kinda comes to mind, mind is we've got a claim against us from the sheriff's department, it's gonna probably cost us about two million dollars. You, you know, those things are something that, unexpected or could be, that's coming down the pike for us. You know what I'm saying, that to keep in mind, that, it uh
Well, not, not just that, we have, we have, we have to look at inflation. We, we have to look at our employees, we have to look at, um, we have professional staff, we have I mean, just, just everything. I, I go clear down to, to, and I, and you'll hear me say, I've said this before, and I, and I wanna, I'll say it again. When somebody walks into our building, they see how clean it is, how nice it is, they see the restrooms, that's what they see. So when I talk about professional staff, it's in every department, that's the part that people see. So we gotta make sure that we have enough to do what we need to do that way.
And, you know, the sheriff's get hiring to be, to be a jailer right now, get, can't even get him plowed.
They're down
So these things we need to
Me. I'm trying to find help.
Well, keep, keep in mind that's, this is reality.
Yeah, I've, this week we've got a letter from the sheriff, we've got a letter from, um Brenda, I've been talked to by the attorney's office. I've, I've been, uh, s- s- the road department, you know, truck drivers hauling crudes making ninety to a hundred, ten thousand dollars a year. So we just, as we go through this, I'm, I mean, I, I wanna just be very careful in what we're saying, but I I do, me personally, I would like to get to the bottom, so we know what, what our true costs are, but I don't wanna be broke either, so.
Yeah, well, I don't wanna have to, what'd you say, bond for the
It's called, it's a bond, it's a tax anticipation note. So basically you borrow money at the first of the year to pay your bills.
I've heard of.
And then in, they call them TANs, T A Ns. And then in November, December, when you get your money, you turn around and you pay it to Zions, Wells Fargo, wherever you happen to get, plus the interest.
I've heard, I've heard about them from other commissioners, I guess.
Yeah, some counties, I'm sure
I don't know if it's quite common, shouldn't say that wording, but I've heard.
That's me. I know Vernal City did for a lot of years back when Harley Hells and that was here.
I don't wanna do that.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna see the county do that.
No, we don't wanna go there, I don't think that's good business practice.
Not when we are not to that point right now, so to
You know, I don't wanna see us get there, but I'd also like to, you know, just my personal comments, I feel like if, uh my knowledge, if you're not going through truth and taxation every four or five years, you're overcharging taxes. My
How, how long's it been since we've done, done one on property tax, on, on this?
We went through a, a truth and taxation when we built this public safety complex. Because we knew we would have costs to operate it, to bring up the jailers to where we were, what we would need. So we, we went through right close to a three million dollar tax increase then. We went through several for the library over the last thirty years. We went through more for the library than what Mister Caldwell has lowered their taxes on the library itself. We would go through a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase for the library, and uh
Sam? I was cracking a joke, sorry. Mark, can you, would you mind telling us what, on the projections on the sales tax, how you came up with that number?
Mark Caldwell, UNA County Budget Officer. Did you get that? Um, couple things, I'll get to the sales tax in just a second, but as far as your cash flow. Uh, property tax is not the only cash flow that the county has, so you get your sales tax monthly, which is a big number that keeps coming in. You do wait, have to wait till November to get your property tax. But as far as the amount of cash you need to fund your operations, you're getting cash in each month in, in some form. Some of your revenue streams come in monthly. I provided you with a projection of your sales tax. I did that at the beginning of the year bef- well, last year we started doing that. It, uh, projects, I think that there's six different sales taxes that you receive. There's the zap tax, there's the restaurant tax, the transit room tax, the county sales tax, and the quarter cent sales tax. So what, what I did is I went back to two thousand seventeen, got the actual amounts. And then we done a projection based on those actual amounts, and then when we put together the original budget for twenty twenty-two, um, they, those amounts were pretty conservative. Uh, but as we, as I watched the first four months come in for this year. Uh, your collect, UNA County's collecting sales tax at a rate higher than it ever has. So your, your sales tax revenue is, is coming in higher than ever. And so we looked at those and adjusted those. Now, the way those were adjusted, we, we had collected the first four months of the year already. And, so I took the diff- the increase, the, the actuals were about twenty-five percent more than the budgeted amount for those four, four months. And so that's the rate that we, I applied to the next eight months. And said, okay, if we keep the same rate, we're gonna be, this is where we'll be. Now, I did that, um, in May, so I had four months that had come in already. Then when we did the budget opener, uh, the, the budget amendment, I went back and looked to see we, we actually collected another month since then. And so I went back to see how close to the projection that was. Those two, those, for the general sales tax and for the quarter cent sales tax. The amounts that came in were higher than the projection, about ten thousand dollars on each of those. So I, you know, it's an aggressive projection, I, I agree with that, but I don't think that it's, um, a- out of line. It, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's based on numbers that are coming in and, and what we're actually collecting. So, it may be aggressive, the other, the offset to that is that your expenses are fairly aggressively budgeted in some cases, and, and we all, we usually end up with surpluses because the, not everything is spent. So if we look back at last year, twenty twenty-one, in the general fund, we had two point nine million dollar surplus. Now, million of the, a million and a half of that came because of the self-funded insurance fund that we used to pay for insurance, so you know, you legitimately had a million and a half dollar surplus. So I think that there's some cushion there that makes it, makes me comfortable in doing a very aggressive sales tax projection.
Okay.
Now, one other comment on the sheet that's been presented. The revenues in there should be right out of the budget, the budgeted revenues, and the one for tort liability, it's off slightly. Uh, the budget, I think, shows three hundred ninety-six thousand, and I believe it, he's got it at three hundred and ninety-eight, so I'm not sure where that difference comes. But it's, it would make your rate go from, I think he's got it calculated zero zero six two three to zero zero no, zero zero one six two three to zero zero one six two two. It's minor, but it, it
Oh, cause it's
It's not exactly the budgeted revenue.
Point The tort liability, I can explain that one, is that's bringing you the certified rate. Our invoices from USIP have been more than that, we've been using fund balance every year to pull up enough money to pay that. So that's why I put that one at the certified rate.
But it's not the budgeted rate, it's my point.
That's true, which can be adjusted.
What is the budget rate?
Uh, it'd be, it would bring in three hundred ninety-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, two thousand dollars difference.
Two thousand more.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Okay. See, the library is, it's up from last year, it was one three five thirteen fifty last year, and it's one point four.
One point four.
Flood control, is that the, is flood control the certified rate, or is that
Flood control is at the
It's at the budgeted rate.
Budgeted rate on that one. And I encourage you to take that to the certified rate. Which it is, cause it's, it's such a small amount that it just rounds to the quadruple four, zero, six.
Somebody explain to me what health, the health one is.
Health department, the health rate there, that is the rate that is collected to fund the health department.
I thought that was taken away, was
No, you still got it on there.
That, that's what we paid at Tri County.
That's what you paid at Tri County, that's what you, that's what you paid at Tri County Health for their
The, the one that, for the care center, that one was taken away.
That's been gone for years.
That one's gone.
This is your Tri County Health match monies.
Alright.
Which you didn't collect enough last year to even pay what was paid.
And that was intentional. Um, we, we, if we assess that, then it all belongs to them. So we lowered that rate a little bit, and we can make that up out of, of the general fund. So that we don't collect more that's just locked up, it's for Tri County Health.
I remember that. Commissioner Stringer, do you have any comments?
Well, yeah, I won't be here next year. If I were gonna be here next year, I might even be arguing for a I don't know that I would go zero percent collection, but I'm tempted. Um, I know you've asked, um, I, first of all. I don't think we should ever be afraid of truth and taxation. I think if you've got a good reason for your taxes, show up and you do it. If you don't, don't go. Um, the other part is, um, I do need to consider what we are leaving, or what, what I would be leaving behind. And so I've been trying to figure out some things, and I am not I am not at all convinced that we are collecting the right amount of money. I think we're getting close, but I, like a lot of things, I've just gone through and started looking. Since I don't know the number, I, I, it's hard for me to figure out what all of these expenditures are, so I went and did some other expenditures, and I'm looking at the county budgets grown, so from two thousand, I think it was about eight and a half million to twenty-eight million now. The expenditures have gone from twenty million to sixty million, and that's from about two thousand to two thousand sixteen. And I know that there are increases that are, that come due, but there's only been, there's been less than a two percent inflation rate during that period, so you can't blame it all on supplies, materials, gasoline, et cetera. So the county's been collecting way more than it needs to operate. There's, there's no doubt about that. So where did the money go? I asked that somewhat rhetorically last week. And what I, cause I got, went through and looked, the money got turned into a lot of it went to salaries and benefits for elected officials and employees. Between two thousand, right around two thousand seven, six to eight. Something really went off the rails, and I'm not sure what. Partially because with all that increase in money, there didn't seem to be any kind of, what are we gonna do with it? I asked somebody, so I didn't mess it up, I just asked somebody, I go, hey, would you take a look at the, our continuation of benefits program? And give me an estimate, this is something we talked about, when we pass a law, when we pass, make a policy. And it has a cost, almost all of them do, that's why we do it. Um, we weren't looking at what it was gonna cost us over the years, and so this person was somewhat liberal, but they, they ran it according to what was being paid, what the cost of insurance was at the time. And they ran it with two hundred and seventy employees, and I, I changed it to two hundred. Because if that stayed in place, if it went in and stayed in place, and it started in two thousand eight, so it's been in place for ten years. Was in place for about ten years. Two hundred employees, if that thing kept going over the ten years, because this includes their spouse, not even employee, it's like thirty-five million dollar cost to the county. Like our, kind of like our, um, our PTO balance, our unpaid PTO balance, I remember reading that before in the audit, that's an unfunded liability. Now, we know we can, hopefully we can pay it. But I don't know where this money, when you, when you approve something in a meeting like this. Seems like you should give the cost, and I don't know, I tried to go back and find where it was approved to see if we disclosed what the cost would be. Because it becomes a benefit Because it becomes a benefit, it's not like, you know, on salaries, we can do lots of different things. In fact, if we have too much salary, we can reduce the workforce. But when we make this obligation, it's forever, until they turn sixty-five, and then their spouse turns sixty-five. So if you actually bracket it, that's the cheapest, thirty-five million. It gets, it goes, if we, if it stayed in place, it would go up into literally a hundred million dollars. It's a, that's an unfunded obligation, but it's contained in our employee benefits. Our 401K between two thousand eight and two thousand twenty, I believe, the additional eight and a half million dollars that was coming out of general fund into that. And then in two thousand seven, the salary for the commission and clerk auditor, that's, I don't think that was the highest one. I but I couldn't find all of them, went up nineteen percent salary, one year, nineteen percent. And so I'm going, this is where some of that money went. But one thing it didn't do, well, there's also our medical insurance, I don't know when it changed, again, I didn't follow this all the way, but we had at one point, it was ninety-five, five. County paid, employee paid five, and then an HSA. And that was five thousand, or was it ever, it might have been six thousand at some point in time. So the money that we were collecting seemed to go to a lot of things, but not to the taxpayer. Don't get me wrong, I know we've got to reinvest our money back into our employees, we have to do that. But I'm not sure why we weren't splitting the benefit with the taxpayer. I don't get that. But one thing I do see is if we're still taxing as if we're gonna pay these, and I'm, I've I've been blasted with commercials here and there, and I think I understand where, what the philosophy of 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 folks might be, is that if these things are brought back in the same way they were brought, then the county is going to run into a very serious money problem, very serious. And so I have no intention of selecting a tax rate that would enable anything like that. I also remembered a little story about Bell, California. I went back and read that and reread it. If you haven't read it, you ought to, there's some kind of eerie similarities to what happened here. Bell, California, it's like thirty-eight thousand people, suburb in LA. They voted themselves in as a charter city in two thousand five. Thirty-eight thousand people, only four hundred voted. And that's a little concerning, it's a voter's responsibility, and that's a problem here in UNA County. I think Brad has a, Commissioner Horace has has a point. You better find a way to keep the voters involved. Because of those four hundred people voting, the salary cap was raised for all the elected officials and others. And so their salaries went, I think for this councilman, went from two hundred to four hundred thousand dollars each. The police chief was four hundred and fifty thousand. They were investigated and found hidden payments and accounts, especially retirement accounts. And then their city manager ended up with, was going to have a pension of about a million dollars a year. I don't know if people realize how much goes, I didn't know how much goes into the pension of a UNA County employee. When I came on, I haven't been here very long, well, two, two terms, maybe that's too long. I can only imagine if I were in here for twenty, you'd easily be a millionaire as a county employee, easily. Not even hard. So I have a real problem with some of that, and I, that's why I do wanna see voters involved. I wanna know, I it's, you can't blame the county entirely. It was, the problem there seems to me to be, you should do you should do the same thing in private that you would do in public. John Wooden, C.S. Lewis said something about that. I think a lot of things happened because no one was really paying attention, and whose fault is that? That's the voter. So let's get that tax rate down there a little bit further, so that we maybe have to do truth in taxation. So that we can explain, cause if we need to explain, we should have a good story. And I'll go one step further by saying our our, kinda mentioned this last week with respect to the Republican Committee. Their whole job is to do some of the work that you can't do because you're, you're, you know, you're busy. I don't know how many of you people know who Ashley Kornblatt is? She's lived in Moab, she worked for the Clintons for years. She's a rec person down there. And when, about four years ago, three years ago, she signed up on the Republican ticket to run as a Republican for the House of Representatives. And the state Republican Committee said, no, we don't do that. We know that it's kind of one-sided, but they did their job. And I'm not sure if the Republican Party needs to be looking more into how people vote, how, look at what the county does, and then that way communicate that. So that the Republican Committee is actually doing some vetting instead of just saying, sign up as a Republican, I guess that's good enough. So in my my position on this one is I'm not sure we found bottom yet in terms of how much we really need to collect. So I'm, as I look at this, I'm I'm more than happy to go with the the proposed rate of, I'm not making a motion, but just as general discussion, I would go from the zero, zero, one, six, two, three, or go to the one, six, two, three, instead of the one, two, two. But that's just based on what I could find going through the records. We spend a lot of money, a whole lot of money that really doesn't go, it goes, some of it goes to where it needs to go, and some of it goes to where it doesn't need to go.
Okay.
John, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, the only thing I don't know if it's appropriate at this time, Mr. Chair, I do have some comments on behalf of the county attorney's office. As far as this discussion, this is between the the financial people and then the policy decision of the county commission. So I really don't have anything to weigh in on, except I do appreciate everybody's input from the auditor's office to Mark Caldwell's department and the commission. I think this has been a a very healthy discussion, so tha- thank you all for that. So I don't know, Mr. Chair, the only comments I have would just be coming from the county attorney's office. So if that's appropriate at this time, I can make them.
No, I I'm interested what you have to say.
So commissioners and, well, actually, all all three offices and departments I talked about, you you all know the recruiting difficulties that we're we're having generally through the county. For the county attorney's office ourselves, it took us two years to get fully staffed. With the available budget that we had, we had to come multiple times to the county commission, and we appreciate you engaging in that conversation, but it still took two years to get a certain amount of money to be able to recruit qualified attorneys. And and we have great staff, we we really do. I know Jamin's philosophy and my philosophy is, we are the largest law office in the basin. We provide legal representation to one of the largest employers in the basin that carries one of the largest budgets and also the heaviest liabilities with the work that we do. So we wanna make sure we have good attorneys and we're recruiting good attorneys, and always making sure that they're performing at a very high level. All of that takes money. If if we go with where we are right now, we we do have a compression issue. I was running the numbers of anywhere between, in our categories of employment, one of them, we only have a three percent difference between two categories of employment. That's that's tight. As you know, when we hired our last attorney, great attorney, but brand new, right out of law school, we couldn't get him lower than our two existing lowest-paid attorneys. He came in higher, and so we needed to adjust theirs up, cause that's not even a compression, that's just they came in higher than what our current employees had. So as we're looking for next year and ongoing, we need to make sure whatever you all do with the certified tax rate and the money that comes in, we need to have some flexibility to be able to recruit good attorneys. And I'm just focusing on attorneys, we have great staff as well, and we have a a great investigator. And our victim advocates and everything else that our office does, we need to be able to make sure we're at least keeping up with the with the market standards. I have had conversations with two different attorneys that have firms here in town, and they have said for the county attorney position, nobody in their firms would even look at that position. It it doesn't even pay enough to recruit out of our, out of our local bar, which is is, I think, a huge indicator. And Jamin's a great attorney, he's a great boss, and I think we we like working for the county. But when we have local law firms saying, we, they just won't even look at our openings, that that's a problem. We're having to pull people regionally, and our last hire was pulling from the Midwest. I mean, we're, we have to continually expand our our pool of of candidates. And then as far as so two comments, we got some compression issues, and then also make sure that there's enough in next year's budget or any year's budget, that if we need to go out and get it, get new staff, we, there's enough flexibility in the budget to be able to do that. As far as inflation goes, I I ran three numbers, and I just keep the numbers pointed at myself, I'll just keep the target on me. Three different inflation calculators from two thousand eleven, when I started, to today. It is showing that I should be, right now, I should be making eighteen thousand dollars more a year than I'm currently making. That's that's an average of those three calculators, from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, from USInflationCalculator.com, and I love this one, SmartAsssets.com, I love that one. But I did the average of those three calculators. So that's just showing on on myself, just looking at me from two thousand eleven to today, on those three inflation calculators, I'm down eighteen thousand dollars from what I was making when I got hired. And I have a comfortable lifestyle. I mean, I I'll I'll put, I'm a public servant, so my salary is public knowledge. I do have a comfortable lifestyle. I'm not out buying boats, I'm not buying extra RVs and all the side-by-sides and stuff like that. I I do take my kids on vacation, I have a comfortable lifestyle. And and so I'm not complaining, I'm just running those numbers that we're we're tracking a little behind of, at least in my profession, of where we would be. I I would think it's healthy every election year, and Jamin would be like, John, keep your mouth quiet. But I'm up for this too, cause I'm an appointed position. I think it should be healthy that people from that private sector would go, huh, I wonder if I should run it for county attorney this year. And they make the decision not solely on money, but they, you know, do they wanna do it as their profession? But money shouldn't disqualify people for wanting to run in the county attorney position. And right now, I think we are in that boat where we just can't get anybody to look at it. So anyway, just just wanted to make those comments.
Okay.
If I might, a couple of things, and this is not, this is not a rebuttal at all to John. I think one of the things that it would be nice to point out is, as we talked about reinvestment, we, there are things that have been done, which is, prior to the wage compression study that we did and the the steps that we took, where we adjusted about five hundred thousand dollars worth of salaries. Every year, there there had been no compression addressed. It had been across-the-board wages, which basically led to the compression. And so wage compression issues have been a constant since then. We've used it, it has become a tool that it wasn't before. We also addressed some severe inequities between the department heads, something that had been, I mean, it was glaring when you really looked at them, why some people, despite their years, why there was such a difference between them. And then also, these, we we did some retirement incentives, but all of this is heading towards the same place, and that is, the, there are some pretty honest employees that will tell you in two thousand fourteen, they were being overpaid for what they were. There was, they'll say it, but now it has, we have started to get to the point where you do need to equalize, which is why, why you look at a financial blueprint of some sort to say, how are we going to keep up with this? Some of the things that have been done free up the money to allow that to take place. But these these things like the four fifty and and some other, these were recruitment incentives, and they were retention incentives, and a lot of people didn't even know they had them. Some did, but not the ones who really needed to know. So I think that is heading in the right direction. If we free up some of this money that has been locked into some of these extras, then you can pay people, you can address some of these. Now, I wish it were as simple as to say you pull up the 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 inflation calculator, the fact is that of all the things that make up inflation, healthcare is one of them. And so since healthcare is, a portion of healthcare is paid, you have to discount that number by that amount. The second is, there are certain, there are different regions for every inflation, and inflation's also based, the base number you hear on TV is based on the clerical position or secretarial position. So I wish it were that simple to say yes. This is the number, but it's not, it's not that easy. It also depends on your quality of life, depends on where you live, things like that. But we do have to make more room, it's coming. You're gonna have to compete, and we'll see what the recession does, but you'll have to compete. We know the attorneys have, we have other positions that have done that, and we've dealt with it. But in order to do that, one of those things needs to be nice to get thirty-five to fifty million dollars of obligation back into the county coffers, so that you can make those kind of adjustments. But anyway, point well taken.
Okay. Yes.
Did I make a comment, or did it be appropriated at this time?
Yeah, yeah, you're lucky, fish will come up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just one thing, as I was sitting back there, something that I thought about, and I noticed on the screen that he brought out was the centrally assessed values have gone up quite a bit. I think that's something that we really need to consider, that there will be, I I would bet that there will be appeals that will come through in the centrally assessed. Those come right off the top, they're not figured into the tax rate. Whenever we have to pay back those appeals, that's just money that is taken out. So that that's something that I think that you need to consider as well, is that those centrally assessed appeals are, they hit us hard some years, and and we've seen that in the past, some of those appeals have been pretty big, and they've hit us pretty strongly. So I would, I would suggest that you consider that as well. One other thing that, in my own personal budget, that I wasn't aware of last year, that that the UAC budget was completely taken out. And so when I went to UAC and I submitted my expenses for UAC, there was no budget for UAC. And I did not build that into my travel budget for my own department, because I was not aware there would be no UAC budget. So that is just something that affects me and my my department personally. Another thing, and and I realize that the rates are driven by value, nobody understands that as, I mean, I understand that as well as anyone. But last year's tax rate, I believe, was zero point zero zero two eight eight five, is that correct?
Yeah, two nine seven oh.
Two one seven oh?
Two nine. Yeah, last year, the rate was point zero zero two nine seven oh.
Okay. So I realized that when the rate Okay, so I realized that when the rates go up, or I mean, when the values go up, the rates go down. I I totally understand that concept, but. That's a big jump from last year's tax rate to what you're considering for this year, so. That was just a few points that I wanted to bring out, but specifically about the centrally assessed refunds. I just wanted to. Remind you of those.
No, I appreciate that. I I've actually been going through some of the appeals that. Have happened and we're gonna, we're gonna address some of those actually.
Where do we stand on the Anadarko? Mike, how many years we got left?
That's why I was just trying to pull up, but it's not connecting me where I'm needing to be.
What do we do that for? Seven years?
Seven years.
Seven years.
This probably be five or six.
We're here in five now, maybe. So maybe I have two more.
Then place before I got in.
First year I was.
Counting this year, three.
We're twenty twenty-two. We still have twenty-two and twenty-three and those amounts for just you and a county.
Two fifty, two thirty, trying to remember.
We are a hundred and three thousand, just a hundred and three nine hundred. So we have still two hundred and six thousand and then we have. The DGNT refund we've got to make this year. I try and get into a spreadsheet I'd made. So I'm not just making up numbers here. I want to give you the number on it.
And while you're looking that up, Mike, we do we do have information from another public meeting that DGNT is retrofitting. Uh and with solar panels as well, so. I'm already in contact with Bart Coons as far as getting in contact with their legal reps. Based off of the stipulated settlement that is public record that if if they retrofit and get any of that. New equipment put in, um we we can go after that, so. We're trying to stay as aggressive as we can on DGNT.
There's two projects in 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 works out there.
Yeah.
One inside, one outside.
But one is currently going. The other one is on paper. Um but anyway, so. We're trying to hit those beca- and and that's why this is a, I'm glad Wendy brought that up. We we have put together a team. Out of Barbara's office because it comes from her and her budget, but with Bart Coons as legal counsel, outside counsel, we have. Specific attorneys now that are assigned and and watching those and we're holding the state's feet to the fire. And then like on DGNT as we get information in public meetings, if they are starting to make improvements like that, then. We want the State Tax Commission to be aware, so it's a true value of of that taxpayers' assets.
DGNT's refund is a hundred and eighty-two thousand nine forty-two plus the hundred and hundred and seven, what was Anadarko's hundred?
Hundred and three thousand.
Hundred and three thousand plus a hundred and eighty-two thousand, so you've got. Three hundred thousand dollars pretty close. And then there was another one I pulled up, but I can't find it right now.
Okay. If you come up with that, Mike, let us know.
I'm trying to get back into the other one right now.
For what? What do you need to know?
Oh, I just, he was coming up with another, any other refunds.
There's DGNT. Was it Strata?
Oh, cool.
Do you remember, was it Strata need, or Wendy?
Yeah.
Well, Strata was the other refund that we had.
I I think you and a county's portion of those seemed like it was all less than fifty grand for.
Yeah, that's why I see between the Anadarko DGNT, we was right at three hundred thousand plus.
Okay. John, do you have any other comments?
Brad? Question there. Uh Mike, back on the, no, general fund balance. You're suggesting around ten to twelve million in there. What do we have?
Well, right now, before you made your the budget, we had that ten or twelve million. Twelve million, probably a little bit more than that, correct, Mark? But with these transfers you did the other day, you're taking that down to close to six to seven million dollars.
Seven, that's what I was thinking. What will we have in the uh? Rainy rainy day fund and the capital projects?
Projects versus our.
There's still about six, six, seven million in the rainy day fund, which you can take the interest off that each year. Uh capital projects, I believe that takes it down to.
There's eight million dollars left in the rainy day fund. No money's been taken out of there except interest last year, which was a small amount.
Yeah.
Um capital projects will be at five million.
Capital will be at five million?
After the payoff of the G O debt.
And the general fund, what did you say?
It's gonna be close to six to seven million or less.
I think it's probably at least seven.
Do you have any other comments? Mike, do you have any other comments?
Nope.
By the way, for the record, that was me shaking my head, no.
Okay, well, um. I will entertain a motion if anybody has one.
You know, Mr. Chair. And uh uh Mark, I'd like to, uh what would the point, what would the figures be if we come up with? Seven, six, eight, nine, two oh five, add another five hundred thousand onto the uh.
Which rate are you looking at?
The zero zero one six two three.
Okay.
If you add, if you added how much to it?
Five hundred thousand.
So we take that to five four, five million four seven hundred and fifty? Takes the tax rate to seventeen fifty-one, bringing you five million four hundred and seventy-five thousand in general fund revenue. Assuming that it didn't do like it did last year, that's what it's telling me. That is still less than the certified, but does give you that extra half a million dollars.
How much less? You got that there?
Last year, this with certified rate this year would be collecting nine million twenty-three thousand. You'd be collecting seven million seven hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Six hundred.
So two.
About one point three.
One point three.
Okay. Still entertain a motion if we have a motion? What happens if we don't have a motion? Does it just go to the certified rate?
It takes certified rate.
And this the certi-
And that's tomorrow, right, Mike?
Yes, that's the twenty-second. Certified rate without the G O debt, because I pulled that out from your motion you made. Certified rate is point zero zero two zero three seven, bringing in nine million twenty-three thousand.
Zero zero two seven three seven?
Zero zero two zero three seven.
Zero three seven.
Which is on your sheet you have there. It was the second sheet unless you've.
Well, the.
I know you've shuffled them, so I'm not sure.
Yes, real quick, there's, I I noticed another sheet here assessing and collecting.
That's the same. We need to address that one when we get this one.
Okay.
And that one there, I put it at the certified rate and I can pull that one up also.
Okay, here again, I'll put it up for a motion. Do we have a motion?
I think that you've added five hundred sixty-seven thousand instead of five hundred thousand to this up here. Is that? Cause we're at four million nine oh seven five hundred. And the difference between that and what you have in the box of four, five forty-seven.
Mike, could you run those numbers again from what uh? The difference would be from what had and what we had proposed or what was the certified rate?
Okay, certified rate would bring you nine million twenty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-three, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Did I get that number right now, Mark, for you? Five million four oh seven, five hundred? Okay. That brings the revenue to. Seven million six eighty-nine two oh five for certified rate of seventeen thirty-six.
Okay, I'm entertaining a motion.
Go ahead, Bill.
No, I remember I'm I'm not gonna be here next year, so my vote doesn't matter.
What was those points if we added five hundred thousand to it again? What was that, zero?
It takes that rate.
One seven, zero zero one seven five one.
Zero zero one seven five one.
Yeah, but one zero, because Mark caught me on the seventy-five thousand there, seven three seventeen thirty-six.
So not fifty-one thirty-six.
Not fifteen seventeen thirty-six.
Uh Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we go with that zero zero one seven three six. Right.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Motion passed. Uh next item.
The assessing and collecting one if we could.
Yes, uh-huh.
Certified rate on that one is five six nine, two million five hundred and thirty-two thousand six twenty-four. And if we take that down to last year's budget, two million five hundred and ten, it takes it to triple zero five six four. I'd recommend the five six nine, but you guys are the.
Where does this money go? What's this?
This one goes for the assessing and collecting of taxes. This pays. A percentage of your office, a percentage of my office, a hundred percent of the assessor's office, a hundred percent of the recorder's office. Ninety-something percent of the treasurer's office. There's a percentage for the attorney's office. That's used for.
That enables us to, a way for us, enables us to get a little money from the school district for managing this.
Right, if we want to go back through history, it used to be the counties would charge all the entities a fee to collect the monies. And through the history of the counties, they have put this assessing and collecting rate on. So it's charged and then there's also a state assessing, which we have no control over that one. And depending on what county, size of county are we, some of us are contributing counties, others are receivership counties like Daggett County, Wayne County. They can't even collect enough to pay what it costs them to assess, so they are receivership counties.
What do we have in there for balance?
I am not sure. I think we're just about. Do you have that, Mark? I didn't bring that with me.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question on this? So this money here or this assessment and then the money that's collected out of it. That's what in Barbara's office, so that is, cause that's where the line item is for Bart Coons. Our our legal cost. I just, is it in that?
Yes.
That's where that comes from?
Yes.
And then also from the change in state law, our telecoms are now going to be locally assessed. And we're not quite sure how that's going to affect our local assessor offices. Um it it seems like right now with some unknowns and then um the point that Wendy brought up and Commissioners, you know. Um the need for us to be very assertive in going after these appeals on the centrally assessed. I would say, let's make sure we have enough money to deal with the the new cost of the telecoms and then. To continue to protect our local tax base by aggressively defending against these tax appeals from centrally assessed.
Cause your new telecom, nobody knows what that's.
We don't know what that's going to be. That's a new burden. That's a new burden from the state. That our our assessor's offices are gonna have to take on and everybody, I know I've talked with Barbara. We're we're not quite sure how we're dealing with that yet and I'm not quite sure how I'm advising her yet.
Yeah.
On on that obligation.
Can can I just throw some numbers in?
Sure, I just wanted to make those two points of things that are in play right now.
So if you go back to two thousand seventeen, assessing and collecting at the end of the year, that sheet that you print out each year. For us, assessing and collecting in seventeen was at five hundred and eighty-one thousand two fifty-six forty-one. In eighteen, it was five forty-three, nine sixty. In nineteen, it jumped to a million seventy-one thousand. In twenty, it jumped to a million two hundred and sixty-four thousand and in twenty-one, it jumped to one million two hundred and sixty-five thousand. If that gives you numbers, that's that's at the end of each year what we've had. So it has, that account has been increased. No, that's what we have balance.
That's the balance of the monies.
Last two years, we went to one million two hundred and sixty-four six oh one. And then this last year was one million two hundred and sixty-five eighty-four.
One thing on that one there, this last year, that's because the recording fees went up. We did not, we were unable, all of her, all the recorder's office was covered by her fees. And hadn't been in the past.
In the recorder's office.
Correct.
Right.
They've always been subsidized, we'll say, out of assisting.
Is that why we're gaining then? Because she's covering her costs?
Right now, she's covering her costs.
And she's doing extremely well this year. Seems like it's covering.
I have not looked at that. I've sent you the reports on that, but I'm not sure.
She's busy. She has a lot of stuff going on. She has a lot of um. There's finally some oil and gas leases coming in that's that's. She's busy. So. That's all I'll say is we have been gaining in that account. Just for numbers, Mike, last year. Um this year, this rate, the five six nine is the certified rate.
It's the certified rate. That brings you the new growth dollars on that one.
And what was it last year?
That's what I was just gonna go right here and look at it real quick.
It's a restricted fund?
It's a restricted fund for assessing and collecting. Last year, the rate was. Six five five, so it's dropping from that down to five six nine. Brings us thirteen thousand in new growth on that one.
You'd get me a rate earlier. What was that? Was that a budgeted rate or what was that rate?
Right, five six four was the, what was budgeted rate.
It's this, this one.
Yeah, it's.
Okay, any further discussions? Mike. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion to adopt the proposed tax rate for assessing and collecting at zero point zero 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 five six four.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Any other business you need to take care of before twenty-nine? Um we're to the time in our meeting for public comment. We'd open it up for ten minutes, three minutes apiece if anybody has any comments they'd like to make.
One thing I'll make comment is get your vote out, get your ballots in the mail. We received three thousand something so far. Comment that someone was telling me that was on the Facebook that we've opened ballots and we know what the results is. That is completely, totally false. We have not even started open ballots. All we've been doing is verifying signatures.
We were told everything on Facebook's true.
That's what I hear, so. But that's not.
Okay.
So to clarify that, no ballots have been opened. We have no idea how many, who's got. We have no idea how many, who's got what ballots or what votes that they've received. But we have received three thousand, what'd I tell you, sixty-eight batches we got right now? Sixty-eight times fifty, thereabouts.
And on your website, you can go in and watch that. You would update that every other day, every day?
Every other day, we'll put on there how many ballots we've received, where they're at in the process and that. We do have about seventy-five-ish thereabouts, what we are, what is referred to as challenged ballots, meaning their signature did not match. So they've received a phone call or, and also a letter, please have them come back. And we did receive two ballots that was quite interesting. The signature tabs have been tore off and they had all kinds of nice language they'd written all over them and sent them in to us. So we can't count them because we have no idea who they're from.
Nice language.
Oh, yeah, they told us all kinds about things about government officials. We're all crooks, they said. So we just hang on to them because we can't count them, we have no idea who's there.
Did you tell them this was not a national election?
Well, I can't tell them.
It was a local election.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they're, they're correct.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, any other public comment? Go in once.
I'll bring you this sheets over for you to sign.
Okay. Seeing no other public comment, uh, motion, I need a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned, thank you.